If you do come up to speak, please speak in the microphone. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Arthur Arsenault. I'm the chairman of the zoning board of appeals tonight. Welcome. To my left is Malin Vega Torres, John Cromwell, and Hugo Verdomo. We will be hearing the cases tonight. First case is 2022-34, 262-72nd Street, DMS Trinity LLC.
Good evening.
Good evening. Please introduce yourself and the address.
My name's Sheila Grant of 92 High Street, Suite 5, Medford, Mass., obviously. I am here again representing DMS Trinity in their request for special permit to renovate the existing first-floor space at 262-72nd Street in order to operate a marijuana retail facility. To recap, the space is owned industrial, which allows for this use. It is currently office space and being utilized as a flower wholesaler. We would be using a space on the first floor, which has a separate entrance. The space provides for all requisite parking. We're here before you, and there were some questions pertaining to the dumpster location, security plan, and signage. We have submitted through John some additional documentation to cover those pieces. The petitioners are social equity applicants and have received SDO approval as a minority business enterprise. DMS is comprised of family members, Dennis and Mary are in-laws, and run as a minority of women-owned business. They are committed to outreach and hiring within the city as well. I have with me Dennis and Mary again, who have updated the presentation we gave last time and are happy to go through it again and show you the updated pieces, or we can focus on questions if you'd like.
Okay. This is a public hearing, and the public portion of the hearing is still open. But I'll ask the board to see if they have any questions before I open up to the public.
Do you want to review just the trash, as you had mentioned?
The dumpster?
Yes, the dumpster and the signage.
We have our consultant Matt here. If you could...
And if you wanted to go to Slide 22 or 23, you'll see what he's going to be discussing.
Good evening, Matt Maggiore. Maggiore Companies, 13 Wheeling Ave., Woburn, Mass. We're the general contractor and facilitating the design documents for the client for construction. So after the previous meeting, we've updated the drawing, both the site drawing and the architectural rendering of the fenced-in area to depict a six-yard dumpster within the fenced-in secure enclosure. So those are both noted on both those drawings. So if you look at the blow-up of this fenced-in area, which is here, you can see proposed six-yard dumpster. And we have that bypass gate, so that provides enough width to be able to back in and pick up that dumpster.
That's just like regular rubbish removal, right? So if there's any merchandise that you sell, how do you dispose of? How do you dispose it?
I don't think we can dispose of regular trash, no.
Okay, yeah. So do you have a special service that you use for that?
We're probably gonna have to need that.
Okay.
That's required by the CCC and run by that, so there is a whole specific procedure with respect to that.
Okay.
Yeah, and we've been approved by the CCC. So we would follow, obviously, all the guidelines there and any additional guidelines you might have.
Okay. Thank you. Any other changes that you've done? Have you made any other changes?
Not any changes. We've updated information with respect to the signage and gotten more specifics with respect to that, and also submitted the security plan that was approved by the CCC.
And if you'd like to see the specifics on the signage, it's actually Slide 60, and I'd be happy to read it as well.
Happy to.
For the signage 60?
The signage slide is Slide 60 if you wanted to put it up and I could read it as well. Okay, so signage details. The sign will have an internal aluminum frame covered with eighth-inch aluminum outer cabinet. The face will be an aluminum sheet with cutout letters and logo. The letters will be one-inch acrylic and pushed through the face and then covered with translucent vinyl. This will create an opaque face, white, with lit letters only as per the code. The cabinet will be painted with a high-grade automotive paint, and will have white LEDs inside. And then, last time, we showed signage samples, and the next couple of slides reflect that.
So it will be two signs on the building, one on the side, one on the front?
Yes.
When everything gets approved, how long will it take you to have the place ready and running?
About six weeks, I think.
Twelve. After receipt of building permit, it's approximate twelve-week build-out.
Can you remind us where the delivery is gonna go?
The deliveries? That side.
Yeah.
So it was in that area.
You might want to go back to Slide 23.
Yeah, that area where the dumpster is will be all gated off, I believe, and that's where all the deliveries will go.
And how many you have a week? How many deliveries?
How many deliveries per day? How many?
Daily.
I'm sorry?
Daily.
One or two per day.
Sorry. So just to refresh my memory, it's a shared space with a flower company?
It's currently office space and a wholesale florist. So there are other tenants in the building. It's mostly office space, I believe.
And the other business that we share space with has a very opposite schedule than we would have. So any potential parking and traffic in the area is very different from what our retail hours would be.
Remind me what the retail hours are going to be?
Nine to nine daily, or whatever the city will allow.
Nine to nine daily. So the other business is gonna operate outside of those hours?
They do like an overnight shift.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So in terms of a shared entrance or exit, it's not a...
It's not a shared entrance or exit.
No.
No, it's completely separate.
Any other questions? Okay. I'll open up to the public. Does anybody from the public have any questions? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public portion of the meeting. John, I know there was some stuff written, but do you want to kind of reiterate?
Yes. The planning board recommended approval with standard conditions as applicable, design review, updated signage plan, hours not to exceed 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. daily, no onsite consumption or smoking, petitioner periodically but at least annually reviews and updates a security plan with the police department, and implements any recommendations of the police department, and implements all conditions of the traffic study at the petitioner's expense.
And major site plan review, right?
Major site plan will be done by the planning board at the January 24th meeting.
Got it. Okay. I don't have any further questions. It's the pleasure of the board.
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Has there been any opposition or anything like that from the abutters, from any of the neighbors?
Nobody spoke in opposition.
Including the school that's not too far away?
Nobody spoke in opposition.
Nothing? Okay.
Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve case number 260-270, 2nd Street, DMS Trinity LLC with the conditions that you just stated.
Do I hear a second? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
So we'll see you here January 24th for the major site plan review.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you, you too. Okay, the next case is 2022-35, 311 Eastern Ave., Steve McDonough.
He's not here. He's not here. I would just go on to the next one and see if he's...
Okay, so the next case, actually, I'm gonna do the next two cases that are gonna go to February 14th. The next case is 2-22-36, 69 to 71 Spencer Ave., Zappal Development, and they have asked to move the meeting to February 14th. Do I hear a vote?
Second?
No, no. Make a motion?
Yes, I make a motion.
Seconds?
Sorry.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Let's see, 214... All right, the next one is 2022-41, 8 Addison Street, St. Mary Orthodox Church. Sorry, sorry.
Forty.
Got it. I understand. Sorry, my mistake. 2022-40, 245-257 Marginal Street, Enterprise Rent-A-Car Company and Boston LLC. They want to move it to the February 14th meeting. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. Second. Excuse me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next. Sorry. 2022-38, Concrete Garden, 307 Broadway. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you very much, Valeria Romano for Concrete Garden, Inc. I'm joined by Vladimir Samuel, our founder. I'm sorry? Yeah, and Alex Yo-Yo. And so we, since our last hearing, we've been in front of the planning board, and we have obtained the referral to come here and hopefully get special permit. I also submitted a supplemental package that I believe addressed all of the comments from Mr. DePree's office. And with that, I guess I'll open it up to the board. Is there something further that you would like us to present?
Okay. So this is a public hearing, and the public's portion of the petition is still open, but I will invite the city manager to... her comments, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, look, I'm a lame duck here, so you can take what I say with a grain of salt. But my administration's position on this proposal has not changed. It has nothing to do... We are opposed, completely opposed, to the board granting this permit. It has nothing to do with the use being proposed. I have never opposed a marijuana retail facility. As far as I'm concerned, the board can approve every one that comes before and let the market determine who survives and who doesn't. This is about this specific location that is the site of numerous violations by the city that have never been properly addressed by the owner. As of this morning, I spent time with the building inspector. Still, as of this date, there's not been a single permit issue to address any of the numerous violations that exist in the building. Second, there's been zero progress in removing the illegal uses that have existed in this property for years. The city has tried to get cooperation, has tried to remedy these problems. We have not gotten the support. We have not made the progress that was promised to this board in the past. It's the reason why two members of the planning board voted against this recommendation. It's the reason why I continue to advocate that this permit not issue. As soon as the city issued this permit, as soon as this board does that, the city loses a substantial portion of whatever leverage it has to try to get cooperation from this building owner. I've advocated to this particular petitioner to find another location. I feel bad for this petitioner, quite honestly. Nonetheless, it is not in the city's best interest, in my opinion, for this board to issue this permit. I'd ask you either to deny it or to continue it and see if any progress is made in the next month, because from the city's perspective, zero progress has been made. Thank you.
Thank you to the city manager, again, Valeria Romano, and through the chair. I sort of think that there's an entirely different perspective on this. What you have is a cannabis use going in, and Mr. Samuel has agreed to actually remediate the various issues. This is the only use that's gonna do that. So by sort of denying the permit or continuing it for some unknown time, we're not gonna sink a ton of money into the building until we know that we're gonna be able to cite there. And this is sort of the first step in being able to cite there. So if you look at the cannabis uses, I've licensed, excuse me, probably 100 and something of these around the Commonwealth over the years. All the cannabis uses continually engage with their community and the building, and they're all like, you know, spotless, scrupulously maintained buildings. This is the opportunity to actually fix the concerns. I mean, I get it. There's an allegation that the current property owner has, you know, has a use that's improper there. We may potentially rent that as our office space, but if we want to get the building fixed up and figure out these violations, this is the vehicle to do it. I mean, there's no, you know, whatever, you know, water is under the bridge between the city and the property owner is really not the fault of Concrete Garden. Now we can fix these issues. And so we have the full list of them. We've started trying to pull building permits, but frankly, we need this special permit in order to move forward and fix this. There's just no other way it's gonna happen. And so I feel like denying this or continuing it for some unforeseen amount of time would actually backfire if the city's real interest is in fixing up this building. Obviously, I, you know, don't have the, you know, the history in the city as the city manager does, but I do know that this is how cannabis businesses work. And as far as having no leverage after this, we have to get a certificate of occupancy, right? I mean, the building department is gonna have to give us a CO, and so how are we gonna get a CO if the building is like sitting there with a ton of violations that make it, you know, unoccupable? So we're gonna fix that as well. So this is not the only leverage that the city has over this location. The building department is the real leverage. And so I urge the board to have us move forward so that we can actually get into the process of fixing the building. I don't know. We're joined by a couple other counselors, Mr. Timmons. I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add.
Yeah, go for it. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is James Timmons. I'm an attorney with an office in Quincy, and I've been representing the property owner of 307 Broadway for... This is my fourth year. And the focus of my representation has been a dispute with the city about bringing this building back online. We now have a zoning appeal that's pending. It's actually down the street in Chelsea District Court, where the property owner is alleging that he has some pre-existing rights, and the city is alleging, well, you have problems with the building. And we're trying to figure out how to resolve everything. The statement by the city administrator that he has told this applicant, "We like your application, just find another location," is outrageous. What's pending before this board is whether this applicant has a good application, which he clearly does, and whether that application in this location is going to work. It's on the first floor, where there are other existing businesses that the city of Chelsea has not complained about during my representation over the past four years. There's nothing in the record from the city of Chelsea beyond arm-waving, and I watched a hearing this past summer where this board was told there are violations that occurred in 2004, that he got permits for doing this and didn't do it, and that there were numerous violations. Well, after that hearing occurred, I asked Mr. Tredway, the assistant city solicitor, to send me a letter listing the violations, because we still didn't have them. I have a number of letters, such as one here dated July 26th, '21, the 2021. Inspections from this department at Chelsea Fire were conducted at the above property. Observations revealed numerous renovations on the upper floors without permits and inspections. No specifics, no violations listed, which is what the state building code requires. We finally got a letter dated September 9th, 2022, which was after the hearing before this board and prior to the reaplication by this applicant, that listed the violations. So the property owner sat with the applicant, went over the violations, they've contracted with contractors who have applied for permits, and as I said, I come from Quincy. In Quincy, when city officials are concerned about the condition of a building and permit applications come in, the permits are issued immediately if there's a concern. Here, we're still waiting for the permits to issue. So the work can start until the city of Chelsea issues permits that have been applied for. But the work is going to be done. I read a comment today that I, again, I just don't understand this, that this board can't be sure that the work in the building will be completed. It's the first comment here. Longstanding violations, the owner is not remedied. Well, as far as the owner's concerned, they've been issued since September 9th of 2022, and that is not longstanding. He has his list, he's prepared to work on it, he's going to work on it, and this statement, paragraph number one, says that the board should be concerned that this work won't be done if you issue the permit. Well, a permit for these individuals, this company, can't be held hostage over this dispute that the city has with the property owner. 307 Broadway is a cavernous building. It's an old building, and it actually could be a very lovely building, but it does require a lot of work. What Mr. Peach, the owner, did was he installed at a cost of $80,000 with minimal rental income. The second and third floors are now vacant, the tax office that's referenced in one of the letters, and the music studio were the only rental income on those two floors. Notwithstanding that, Mr. Peach spent $80,000 to outfit the building with a fire sprinkler system that the fire department has inspected and signed off on. The overseer of all this work, a licensed building official, could verify that. But there are sprinklers in the building, the building is safe, the city, if it were concerned about safety, would have shut the building down, and they've never done that. They finally issued a violation letter, but there was never any issue with safety. And now you have an applicant that, at the prior meeting that I sat through, this board said, "You have a good application." And then, what is the nature of this application again? It's a...
An adult-use marijuana retailer.
What's that?
An adult-use marijuana retailer. Oh, economic empowerment, social equity, yes, exactly.
Yeah, the social equity application, and everyone was very enthused about that. Well, they're going to go into the first floor, where there's a bakery and a couple of other businesses that have never had any problems. They're street-level, on Broadway, readily accessible to the public, everything is fine. The second and third floors are sealed off from those businesses or can be further. But importantly, in these plans, you have a business going in that by dint and nature of the business is going to be completely physically segregated from the rest of the building. That's what I respectfully suggest this board should be reviewing and ensuring. If you're satisfied that the particular physical facility that they are representing to you, they're going to construct here, right on Broadway, they're right in the center of the town, right where this functioning bakery has business coming in and out all the time, it's a terrific location. I don't understand how a city official can tell someone, "Go somewhere else." There are other issues here, but I'll address them with the assistant solicitor in the zoning appeal. But I ask that this board look at this application, which is an excellent application. It's a way to help Mr. Peach bring this building back online in a reasonable manner. He's not looking to go to the second or third floors, which are the areas that are identified as problematic. The applicant and the building owner have committed to resolving everything as far as the building inspector, the building officials' letter of September 9th, 2022. So were you to grant this permit, you're actually gonna help both parties solve the problem. This isn't a case of an issue where Chelsea's gonna have further problems with this building. I'm in court, as I said, with the assistant solicitor. We're gonna take care of the issues there as well, but this is an opportunity to help bring 307 Broadway back online, but to allow this particular business, which will provide Chelsea with an economic empowerment opportunity, to move forward. So I'd ask that the comments that have been raised about the building in the summer this evening, that while obviously you have to be respectful of the concerns of Chelsea, and the building owner is as well in relation to the building, please understand that it's the application of these individuals creating a segregated unit that we ask you to focus on, and you can put reasonable assurances in the permit as a condition that representations made here tonight are followed through one. So I thank you for listening and ask you to further consider this application with an open mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't think I have a lot more to add, other than, of course, you know, we'll accept any reasonable conditions of the board, and should those conditions include bringing the, you know, resolving the various issues that's in that September letter, that could be a reasonable condition. I just spoke again to Mr. Samuel, and he's committed to working with the property owner and bringing this building up. So I think it's a great opportunity to solve the city manager's problems, and by kicking the can down the road, I feel like we're gonna do the exact opposite. So with that, I turn it over to the board for any questions that we may have.
May I speak? At any, all the previous meetings, and at the last planning board meeting, I brought up the issue of the illegal, the non-conforming uses, the unpermitted uses. And there was no discussion of it. It was, in fact, the previous speaker in the planning board avoided saying anything about it, and I hear nothing tonight about addressing those uses. All I hear about is addressing the building violations, the building code violations. What is the schedule for addressing the illegal uses? It's not really, it's not really relevant to having to have this permit to address those illegal uses.
Okay, yeah, well, just really briefly. So I'm just, Mr. DePree, so I just heard you correctly. It's not relevant to this permit to address the other illegal uses in the building?
No. What I mean is, you were arguing that the building owner needed this use in order to provide for addressing the building code issues, having some funding to provide the building code issues. That has really no relevance to addressing the use issues, because all the building owner has to do is, you know, remove them from the site.
I understand the concern. Are those purportedly illegal uses in the unit that we intend to occupy?
They are in the building.
And so we're occupying a discreet unit in the building. Is it, I mean, frankly, is it really a relevant consideration for our ability as a discreet applicant in the building? We've fulfilled the requirements of the special permit application. I understand there's a goal for the city to get this building, you know, the building code violations and, you know, alleged illegal uses resolved. I get that. But is it really something that we have to resolve tonight, given that we have a discreet application for a particular use, for a particular portion of the building that's gonna be segregated from the rest? I mean, how could that be a ground... I mean, how could that be a grounds to deny the special permit for that, the, the 1,500 square feet that we propose to sit in?
The petitioner has made, uh, statements that he has an agreement with the building owner to address these issues because he knows of the concern of the board, so he is tying it.
Well, so the petitioner is certainly able to do construction on the building. And we have spoken with the property owner in potentially leasing one of those spaces where one of these alleged illegal uses are.
Yes, exactly. So there's a, the, the two illegal uses are the tax office, and there is a bakery in the basement. So the tax office, I am going to take that for office space for my, uh, for my unit. And so we're gonna do a full build out there for the office. Uh, I, this is new news. We just agree, uh, we just spoke to the owner last week. And we are going to take that space because it is, um, open right now. There is nobody there, so we are going to take that space for office use. And the bakery that is in the basement, I spoke to the head of ISD, Mike McAtter. And he said, uh, if the violations are remedied, um, there's no reason that that bakery cannot get, the, the, the baker in the basement cannot get an occupancy permit, straight from Mike McAtter, when we spoke last week.
When? When, when is this issue going to be addressed?
So the issues will be addressed. So we plan on doing construction from now until April. And all the, the building violations will be remedied, which will allow the bakery in the basement to get an occupancy permit because there are violations there. And so, and also the other illegal use is the tax office, and we are going to take that for, uh, office space.
Is that office space, was that included in your presentation to any of the boards?
We, we have, we have potential discussion. We'll come back before the board if we want to expand what our application is. Right now, we have administrative space and employee space on the second floor, and then our retail facility on the first floor. The question is, when are these things gonna be addressed? The answer is not till after the permit is awarded. And it's, this is, this is a compliant application for a discreet use for a portion of the building. And somehow, you expect a social equity applicant to come in, fix up the building, kick out two tenants in the building before they can even come before the board and request a permit? It's just not reasonable. I don't understand why.
May I, may I go on? No, the board does not expect the petition to do it. The board really expects the building owner to do it. But the building, the petitioner has taken on that responsibility.
And, and they've confirmed that they're gonna, they're gonna fix the building code violations in the building, which would make the, the bakery on the ba, on the basement floor, you know, up to code. And then they're in discussions with the property owner potentially using this other ancillary area as office space. That's not part of the instant application. If we need to come back before the board, if we're gonna expand to that for office space, just so we can get this permit through, right? That's, that's the reason we're jumping through these hoops. We will come back before the board. But there really, tonight, isn't a substantial reason why to deny this permit. We're, we've submitted a compliant application. At the last hearing, we responded to everything, and I actually... Yeah, we got a positive referral from the planning board. You know, this is the opportunity to approve this, then give these people the financial security that they need in order to go through and fix the building, so that we won't have the issues that the city manager brought up. But by continuing this, and this is just sort of, we're like butting our heads here, and nothing's ever gonna get resolved. But now you have the opportunity with a cannabis company, a retailer, that's so much oversight between the city and the Cannabis Control Commission, you're about to have a beautiful building with, with the code fixed. You're not gonna have a cannabis retailer in a building with illegal uses. It's just never gonna open up. The Cannabis Control Commission was gonna come to you and make sure, at final licensing, that we've complied with everything. And they're gonna reach out to, I mean, potentially the city manager. But there's no way, this is the perfect opportunity to fix these issues as opposed to just sort of kicking the can down the road and expecting something to happen when it hasn't. So I, I don't know what further information that we can provide. So with that, I mean, I turn it back over. Mr. De Priest, I appreciate where you're coming from. We want to fix this building, we want to get it up, you know, code violations and the use violations up, there are the alleged use violations. This is the way to do it. I don't really know how further to, to explain that. And I think it's probably pretty well understood. And what I'm saying isn't controversial. There is no disputed fact where, where we're disagreeing on some factual matter, right? That we're trying to issue a permit so they can go fix the building? They pull the building permits?
Question, is the tax office vacant now?
Yes, it is.
Yes, we just, I also just got confirmation from the building owner that the tax office is vacant now.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Anybody else from the petitioner or the building owner wish to speak?
Looking at the review sheet. Police Department comments, they're fine with everything, and they approved of the security. Fire Department comments, Fire Department requests a set of sprinkler and fire system plans for the property. Well, they've already approved the sprinkler system. They'll obviously get, when all the work is done, the fire system plans for this unit. And to the extent further work goes on, they're gonna be involved in that. Department of Public Work comments, final sentence, at present, DPW takes no exception for the project as proposed. The negative comments are, what's going to go on with the second floor? Well, if you look at the application, now, I, I heard tonight from the applicant, he might use an office up there. But the application is on the street level. It's a part of the building. So I would ask the board to focus on this segregated unit again, and this opportunity for this application.
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, so I mean, there is a portion of the application that's on the second floor. It's clearly described in the application itself, square footage. We responded, we responded in detail to all of, uh, Mr. De Priest and the board's concerns from the last hearing. I don't know if there's anything else we can provide, and we need to continue again, that would certainly be disappointing to us, as we'd like to be able to move this project forward. You have a social equity and an economic empowerment applicant, where a certain number of the licenses in Chelsea were actually supposed to be earmarked for exactly these folks. And that's been delayed, unfortunately. And I hope that somehow we can keep this moving forward. Like I said, I think we have a compliant application. There's no issue of fact that is in controversy. And we can set reasonable conditions on the application, particularly if we want to reference that September letter that describes the various building violations, and make sure that before we are allowed a certificate of occupancy, or at least to open our business, that those are remedied. So that would be my suggestion. And with that, any other questions from the board? We'd be happy to answer, you have the full team here.
Okay. I'm going to close the public portion of, of the, um, the hearing, but the petitioner obviously can make comments or...
I think we're good. Thank you for the chair.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions or comments?
If this doesn't get approved, was the plan of the owner to try to fix the problems in the building?
So, uh, Jim, the question was, if, if, if this is not approved tonight, what's the plans for the owner to try to fix the building?
Uh, well, we, we have permit applications in now that were submitted by the applicant. So we'll have to pivot. We have the court case going on. And, um, I, I'm not quite certain. I don't know. And I, I respectfully, while I certainly understand the question, and I understand why a representative of the city would ask it, I would respectfully suggest that really doesn't have anything to do with this. If the permit's denied, it would not be denied on the basis of the applicant and the application. So I would expect they would appeal that. I'm not quite sure as far as the, the, the building, because what the property owner has done is vacated the second and third floors where the issues are. And will keep them vacant because of the court case. So in that instance, you'd have first floor property, and I'm not sure what we'd end up doing with those folks. But we'd keep the second and third floors vacant, which would mean that the city would not be able to take any further affirmative action. But the applicant, or rather, the owner could not try to get permits to use the second and third floor unless he fixed, he remedied the conditions. So part of what was going on here is bring part of the building online and use that money to upgrade the building and get the building back on its feet. And we will continue that process, hopefully with this applicant and with this, uh, this business in the building paying rental income. Because I, as I said, he's already down $80,000 to get the sprinkler in because that was considered a public safety issue by the city of Chelsea. So Mr. Peach addressed it. He put the sprinkler system in, and we'll continue to work in that manner. So I didn't answer your question, and I'm sorry for that, but I'm, I'm, you know, it's, it's, it's a tough one. I don't wanna anticipate a denial of their application for this business.
Okay, you mentioned that the court, is the owner in court against the city, or was the, if...
The court case, is that what you asked?
Yeah, you, you mentioned that it's a process in court now. Who's in court?
We filed an appeal. I filed an appeal on behalf of Mr. Peach. Um, I, I could give you the exact date.
Against who, against the city, against the city?
Yeah, the city is the, is, uh, the defendant, the zoning board of appeals. And there are claims that I, I, frankly, I've always worked very cordially with, um, the assistant solicitor. And we're, we're working to resolve things, not, not to continue to have one party win or another. Um, you know, we're trying to resolve this. And that was part of the process that brought forward the discussions when Mr. Peach solicited applications for the first floor. We thought we were moving in that type of direction, where we would incrementally bring the building back online. But, so I would call the court case a zoning appeal that's pending, with the parties working to mutually come up with a resolution to get this building back online.
Mr. Timmons, may I ask, through the chair, may I, may I bring up the subject? Should this permit be awarded, would it be possible that the issues that are before the court now would get resolved because we would move forward on repairing the building?
Well, on our end, on, on our end, it would. But I'll just make, I can't be certain what the city will say. Because we have to just further bring the second and third floors online, that's all. There's gonna be additional work on the building. But now, as, as I mentioned before, as of September 21st, 2022, we know what the issues are. Prior to that date, all we heard were comments such as the one from the administrator where there are all kinds of violations in the building. Fine, tell us what they are, we'll fix them. We now have the list, and we're gonna fix them. It'll definitely get fixed.
I'll ask a question for him. Can you remind us, um, the first time you came? Um, you were talking about the second floor, putting this project, was the second floor you're trying to, the first time?
The second floor?
Yeah, that's what you're trying to use, the first time, the second floor?
No, we're, we're using the first floor, but we are addressing all the issues in the building.
I'm sorry, the first time, not the past month, the first time you came?
Oh, we've always been in the same unit on the first floor. And we're addressing all the issues in the building. So we are going to go through, and we already put plumbing permits in, building permits in, and electrical permits in. We're waiting for those to come back so that we can start the work on the building. That's not even for my unit, that's for everything in the building. That, and that addresses the September 9th letter of violations that was, uh, 2022 that was sent out. So we're addressing all the violations and all the use violations.
Mr. City Manager, do you need to, like to respond?
I really don't want to get into a back and forth here. You folks have heard my position. I do take exception to one thing. Leave aside the city's objection to the idea that until September of 2022, the owner had no idea what the violations were on this building. But at least I've got them to concede that in September of 2022, they knew exactly what every violation was. Yet we're here in January of 2023, and still not a single permit has been pulled to fix them. The attorney suggests that's the fault of the city, they don't act quick enough. When the reality is, from the building inspector today, every application they've submitted has been deficient, hasn't shown sufficient plans for how they're gonna fix them. That's the reason why no permit has issued. So they have not done a single thing to address the problems that were previously presented to this board the last time this petitioner was here. That's the last thing I'm gonna say, the board should do what it thinks is best.
I, I'm, I'm really at a loss. Uh, we, you know, this applicant is not the building owner, who's just gonna be a tenant in the building, has pulled electrical, plumbing, building permits, or applied for them, has gotten comments back, has responded to those comments. We haven't had any rejected permits. You have a great applicant here who's sitting waiting to fix this building. I don't really understand what the, it seems like it's almost a political thing.
I, I, I get it.
Through the chair, I apologize.
I, I get it.
And, um, one other thing for your consideration. The reason that the applicant is before you tonight is because he can't pull permits to construct the facility that he wishes to construct until you vote on it. Once you grant the necessary relief, then further permitting will follow. So I, I, you know, we've been trying to deal with the city for a while now. Today, I hear for the first time, for the first time, that this afternoon, late in the day, the building inspector says there's problems with the permit applications that have been pending for how long?
Uh, since December 4th.
Since December.
I have resolved, and I committed everything that he needed.
Sorry this is going on, but it really doesn't, it's not part of the application before you.
The building inspector did give me comments, and I was able to fulfill everything he asked for. He gave me the comments, and I responded, and I submitted all the attachments, all the images that he needed. Uh, my contractor license was he needed. Uh, he needed a contract for me and my contractor. He needed the liability insurance for my contractor, or the workers' compensation insurance, and I submitted all that in, so I've waited for him to get back to me.
Okay, thank you. Does somebody, any other comments from the board, questions from the board?
I don't know what the planning board decided.
The planning board recommended, not unanimously, um, approval of the, um, special permit with following conditions. Standard conditions as applicable, design review, signed plan, uh, address unpermitted uses in the building, no onsite consumption or smoking, review security plan with police department at least annually, and implement any recommendations made by the police department. All zoning and building code violations be addressed prior to the issuance of an occupancy. And then, um, I just added hours not to exceed 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
And through the chair, we have no objection, of course, to any of those conditions. They all seem reasonable.
Any other comments, questions? Joan, anything? No, no, I just have, I mean, I don't want this.
Yeah, yeah. The only question that I, and that's something that keeps, you know, running through my mind is, you know, you said that you made a commitment with the landlord to, like, address, you know, these issues that are outside your space.
Absolutely.
Why?
Uh, because this is a great opportunity for us as, um, as a, as social equity and economic empowerment, um, to get in there and show kids that look just like us. We're from Chelsea.
Yeah.
So to get in there, to show kids just like us, that yes, you can do it if you work hard enough. You can, you can make something of yourself very much. And so that's what we're fighting for, to make something of ourselves.
I mean, they've, frankly, they, it seems to them, and probably right from the comments of the city manager, that the only way to get this done is to commit to fixing the rest of the building problems, right?
And we have no problem with that.
Although, in my opinion, I've done many, many of these, and we have Mr. Timmons here with significant expertise, it's probably not particularly relevant for this exact application. But I've spoken with Mr. Samuel separately, and I've told him, hey, you're really committing to fixing up the rest of this building. Why don't we try to just make this just your location, just your portion of the building? He said, no, Val, I've committed to this, I've committed to this. He's told me that directly. I've sort of tried to counsel him not to commit to it, and, but he's committed to it. And so that's, you know, that, yes. And it's not that anybody is, the only person or anybody that might be sort of pushing him towards this, which is seemingly unreasonable, would be the fact that he hasn't had his permit awarded yet when, you know, these outstanding issues are there. And he feels like the way to get it awarded is by resolving these issues. And frankly, it's a great location for a cannabis retailer in Massachusetts. And every month that goes by is a month lost revenue, where that month of revenue would pay for the building to be fixed. So, you know, if we continue this, it just makes it harder and harder to get it done.
And what's the cost, like, total cost on average? Like, the commitment that you made to do these repairs outside of the space that you plan on renting?
What's the total cost?
Yeah.
Um, we're gonna handle the total cost. We, we, we know, the total cost is about $50,000 to $70,000.
So you're investing $50,000, you plan on investing $50,000 to $70,000 outside of your space?
I do, very much.
Have you committed to a lease with this landlord?
I have had a lease with him for the last 18 months.
And how long is this lease for? And how long is this lease for?
It is for five years.
Five years?
Yes.
That's a big commitment.
We're very much committed, we're committed to this business, we're committed to the landlord, we're committed to, to, to opening up and, and being a pillar in the city of Chelsea.
So in terms of social equity, you guys are like poster picture.
We have-
For that. But it's disheartening to know as tenants, there's a missing piece there, and that's the landlord. That for you to go above and beyond in fixing and, and being totally invested is, is plausible, but sometimes it's like bringing a friend to lunch and he didn't bring his lunch. So how does that work in terms of, I only wish that the prop, the, the owner would stand up and say, I'm committed to this, or why has it been so long that the permits weren't pulled, not on your part, but on the building owner? Because I feel like even though you guys are committed, it's kind of setting this plan up to fail if these things haven't been fixed, haven't been, it's been years. The property owner has come before us for several years now with these complaints. So that's worrisome and that's, that's really unfortunate. But also, the other businesses there, like the bakery is operating, and there's another business there as well.
There's a jewelry store, a clothing store, and a baker on the first floor, but there is another baker in the basement. So the bakery that is opening is sanctioned, it is, it has its occupancy permit, it is running legally. But there is a baker in the basement which does not have an occupancy permit, and they are not there, but with our construction, they will be able to pull an occupancy permit.
It's just unfortunate that it's been so flagrant on the property owner's part, because your plan is beautiful. It's, you guys are born and raised here in Chelsea, it's beautiful, this is exactly what social equity is all about, but the flagrancy on the building owner's part really puts a damper on that. And I just, I'm baffled how the other businesses on the ground level are up and operating if there are so many violations in the building and codes and things like that. So if they're on that level, you know, they're just another business doing business on that level. So if the bakery can operate and the, the jeweler and all the other business, I don't think that, you know, excludes them from operating on that level as long as their plan is in place. And I think that's what I'm kind of struggling with, that if there's three businesses already operating there on that level, then what makes them that exception? The other part of the building is worrisome, and what type of commitment or agreement or what can be worked out that, you know, there's some reassurance that, you know, these guys could get that social equity piece, which is amazing, but the other part of that is worrisome. So what do we do in terms of that?
I mean, I, I think the one suggestion, and I understand the, you know, I had the same feeling, I'm like, look, Vod, we're not fixing this guy's whole building just so you could move this retailer in. I, I'm like, that's, that's not fair. Like, why would that be our responsibility, right? And, and we've had that conversation multiple times, you know, and, because I'm looking out for him too, he's my client, we've actually become friends over the last, you know, couple of months, like I, I'm, I'm with it. But the fact is, you know, a bunch of market forces, we're a cannabis retailer in Massachusetts, the, the available properties, he's a Chelsea local, right, like, you know, the available properties in Chelsea to do this, this is an ideal property. You know, the fact that if we get this permit awarded, you know, that brings us, if we need to do additional fundraising, that brings us like much closer to that because there's more certainty for anybody we want to borrow money from. I mean, getting this permit awarded is really the net, sort of the next step. I mean, if the board would not make a condition that we fix all of the other building issues, we would certainly support that not being a condition. We offered that as a reasonable condition so that we can get the permit awarded so these guys can keep moving forward. But I, I get, I get the issue, I, I totally do, I felt it the same way after we first started talking about this and I read that list of violations, and Vod's like, I'm fixing all these, and I said, no, you're not. And, you know, and he's, but frankly, the market forces for cannabis in Massachusetts, spending an extra fifty grand to open up front for a marijuana cannabis retailer on a great location like that Broadway location are not such that, you know, it's prohibitive, despite the fact that we feel like, you know, we're going to continue to work. Mr. City Manager.
My suggestion to the board would be continue it for one month and let's see if the city and this owner can make a little bit of progress in the next month.
I appreciate the nature of your question and what you're trying to do. And what I would propose is this, that a condition in a permit grant be that within ninety days after the issuance of permits, because we have no control over whatever it is that's going on with the inspectors. All I can tell you is that my experience has been unusually difficult, all right, and I'm not sure why, it has something to do with this building and this applicant, but I have sat in meetings with Mr. McAtier and then things don't happen that we talked about. And I don't know why, Mr. McAtier has been terrific to deal with during the course of the litigation. But my point is, I can't guarantee when the city will issue permits. We heard for the first time today at the hearing, not prior to the hearing, at the hearing, that there are problems with plans and everything. Well, I looked at that September twenty-one list and the plans to do the work that has to get done are nothing exceptional. We're not constructing a new building here, all right? So I will call Mr. McAtier tomorrow on behalf of the property owner, I will email him as well, and I will email Mr. Tredway, the assistant city solicitor. And I'll tell him what went on tonight, I'll send them a copy of the, the letter, and I'll ask them to assist me in getting permits issued so we can get the work done. And we'll make it, we'll, we'll get the work done within ninety days. I checked with Mr. Peach's contractor, his licensed contractor, who's also a municipal building inspector. So we can get the work done, it's nothing exceptional, and we will get the work done. And I do understand the question about the property owner, what is his investment and are we dumping it all on a, on a, a tenant who in his exuberance to get into this project might be taking on too much? Well, there was some back and forth between the parties about the tenant fit up and the capital investment and how that would impact rents. So the parties are being treated fairly, both parties have lawyers involved, and then I've been involved with a lawyer from the city. So that may or may not be a good thing that we have three lawyers stirring the stew, but we'll do what we can here. Okay, so that, that would be the response to your question, that would be a fair condition.
So just through the chair, it sounds like attorney for the property owner committed to getting the repairs done within ninety days after the permits are issued by the building department. And so that, you know, with or without Mr. Samuel, it sounds like we just got that commitment from the property owner. So I, I hope that helps to resolve some of the, the issues that we might have. And additionally, finally, with the city manager's last comment, well, obviously, I respect the city manager's position and really want to get this building, but he asked to continue it for a month so that we could, there was nothing tangible in the reason to continue it. It was to continue it for a month so that we could see what progress is made, and that's not a basis to continue something that has been applied for once, then withdrawn, subsequently applied for again. We got all the comments from, from the city, responded to all the comments, had another, now we're on our second public hearing for a social equity applicant at an existing retail spot on Broadway. So I, I don't see why, you know, a, a further continuance so that we could see what progress is made would be appropriate or relevant, particularly that we just got a commitment from the property owner that we will have these issues fixed within ninety days after the permits to fix them are issued.
I, I want to acknowledge that your question was similar and that I kind of tap danced a little bit. I went back and talked with the contractor to find out more information about what was going on and how long it would take to do the work. And then I think your colleague's question helped focus a little bit the answer that I brought forth. So there will be a commitment for a condition of that nature.
Yeah, we, we weren't trying to discount any individual comments, we just had an opportunity to powwow for a minute and were able to come to a better consensus as to what the path forward will be.
You all set, Joan? You all set?
I am.
Okay. Would you repeat that condition, please, so all, so within ninety days of issuance of a building permit?
Yeah, why don't I let Mr. Timmons do it? Yeah.
With the consent of the applicant, the property owner agrees that a condition of this permit could be, or the permit could be made conditional upon the property owner exercising due diligence to obtain permits, and then within ninety days from the date that the permits are obtained from the city, completing the work on the September twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two violation list. And we'll get sign-offs and, I mean, technically, the building inspector would be signing off, would be the, the custodian of the confirmation of that sign-off, but we're happy to provide that to whomever.
So that addresses the building code violations. What about the use violations?
So as far as the use violations, the tax office is now vacant and we have confirmation that the bakery on the basement will no longer be a use violation should the building be brought up to code. So both of the use violations will also evaporate should we be allowed to move forward with this.
Are they in the letter, the use violations?
I think they're in that first paragraph, yeah.
Are they in the letter?
They are in the letters.
Yeah.
Is the bakery still, is the bakery in the basement in, in operation right now?
So I, I think there's some, so I, I-
This is, may I?
Of course, sorry.
This has been part of the dispute in the court case, is pre-existing rights and whether a use in the building was in existence and therefore grandfathered. And that's something I've been working on with the, the city solicitor. Now, if it's considered a violation, I'll find out from the property owner what's going on with that, but if it's, if, if there's some issue, it would only be with the consent of the city solicitor's office that somehow if this basement bakery operation is, is pre-existing, maybe they can override that as a violation in the November, the September twenty-one letter. But anything that happens here would be either full compliance, or if there's a use issue that is part of the dispute with the city solicitor, I'll ask him to notify everybody. Because I, I frankly don't know whether that basement bakery is an issue or not.
And just sort of go back to the, the larger perspective here. There was an early cannabis medical dispensary at twenty-one Milk Street in Boston. It's an office building. Was that tenant required to make sure that all the other tenants in the office building were fully up to code and the whole, there's, you know, there, there's various, one of these, you know, in Arlington, one of the very first ones I opened was in a building with many tenants next to a pediatrician's office. We were never expected to make sure that all the other tenants in the building and the, and the property owners' full issues with the building with Arlington were up to code. That was never an issue that was in front of the special permit granting authority or relevant for that special permit. And there are numerous others in Massachusetts that are in multiple tenant buildings where this is not necessarily an issue. No, I, I get it, this is the form, we've heard from the city manager, this is the only leverage that the city has to fix this building, and if you permit this, somehow these guys are going to open up a marijuana retailer without fixing any of the building issues, which as we've discussed, we'd make this reasonable condition, that can't be an issue. And so, but it, it's just, you know, on the ten thousand foot level, this issue of what is going on in the rest of the building, discreet from their occupancy, isn't really relevant to it, you know, to what's in front of this board. I, yeah.
Yeah, I, I totally agree. It's just questions that we have, I mean, I, I get it, yeah.
Yeah, and so, and so we're committing to things above and beyond to satisfy the board because, you know, Concrete Garden really wants to move this thing forward, you know, they've been, like he said, he's been, he's been in, you know, a lease for this building for well over a year, right? So let, let's, let's let them, you know, move forward with, with the project. Anyway, that's, yeah, thank you.
Joan, Joan, do you have any other further comments?
No, I have none.
Okay, so you got the-
Other, other than adding the-
Yeah.
-condition that was proposed to the list of conditions.
Yeah. Okay. I'm, I'm going to say I support this petition with the conditions that the building is fully, you know, renovated so this petitioner can get in there, all right, because for lots of reasons, for safety and for all of those issues, but the petition, the occupancy permit will not, cannot be issued until the violations are, are remedied. Is that, is that your understanding?
Yes, through, to the chair, yes, that's exactly what I've talked about with Mr. Samuel.
Right. That is what I am in support of and I will, that's what I am supportive, to the rest of the board members, that's what I am supportive of. You only have four board members here, you need four votes.
Yep.
You know, and every single vote we take is, you know, is based on what, you know, they're, you know, they both take conscience however, you know, they choose, so.
We do not object to that condition.
Okay, all right, so-
Directly.
So that's-
So it's with the conditions that was expressed-
Yes.
-were shared.
Yeah.
With the ninety days.
Right, so, so it is the pleasure of the board.
So how long does it take to, well, Joan, would you be able to like answer this? I don't know, maybe I S D needs to respond to this, but how long does it take to issue a permit?
If the, all the information that is supplied is adequate for the building inspector to make the determination that it meets the building code and zoning, it, it's usually done in a very short time.
And then it's ninety days after that? So once they approve the permit, then ninety days after that to correct all the violations in the building?
Yes, and through the chair, that's the commitment I heard from the property owner's attorney, absolutely.
Yes, I, I would think that the landlord would do the right thing, you know, it's a, it's a large space and if he wants to be able to like rent to tenants, especially like this one, you know, that has applied for a space there that's willing to make such a long commitment, not only, you know, like a five-year lease, but like the financial commitment that they agreed to, that he would, you know, step up to the plate and do the right thing to, to correct all the violations in that property as a good landlord and as a sign of good faith with us, because he has come before the board several times with different petitions, and I think that we've been fair with him, and I think it's time that, you know, he does the right thing.
And I've heard that, I've heard that commitment from him, we, we powwow, and I, I will, you know, not at a significant expense to these guys, I will, you know, I'm very fair, I will stay on top of this and make sure it keeps moving forward, because once I have a client, I always care about them, and, and so we'll absolutely, you know, keep this moving forward and stay on top of the landlord to remedy the various issues. I, I guess I'd throw out there, I know they said ninety days, if the board wanted to make the condition a hundred and twenty, that might make me more comfortable, but I don't want to amend something at the last second.
The sooner that he could do the repairs, the better, and, you know, it's not fair to them, you know, as a new tenant, it's not fair to them, they're trying to do the right thing, you know, they've come before us several times and they just want to open up a business, you know, provide services to the city. And we want to, you know, be fair as board members and give them an opportunity, but we also want them to be safe. We want them to be able to move into a property where they're not going to have any issues as well, so.
We absolutely will commit to the condition and, and, you know, and won't be, the CO won't issue until the list is, is resolved.
And I'm assuming that the cannabis commission won't have any of it unless it's properly safe and like, everything has to be proper with the cannabis commission, like you can't, you know, I'm sure they're going to inspect this, well, all right, I'm going to ask you, do they inspect the space before they open?
Yes, so in order for us to apply for the post-provisional license inspection, right, the PPLI, we actually have to submit the certificate of occupancy to the cannabis control commission. They will not come in and inspect- They will not come in and inspect until we've shown them that we have a CO, so.
So then, so then they come into the site and, and if it's not up to, you know, up to inspection, they're going to say you can't have it and then, you know-
Yeah, absolutely. And so we're making a condition of the permit that a CO won't issue until we resolve the September twenty-first, twenty-two list. I can't apply to the commission for a final license until a CO issues. That's directly in the rules, I'm happy to show it to you. And so there's no way that we're going to get licensed by the Cannabis Control Commission until we've resolved the problems that exist in Chelsea.
Right, okay, so it's-
A hundred percent.
Yeah, so it's beneficial for everybody, for him, for, well, for everybody that it's done the right way because then he doesn't get the permit, the landlord doesn't get the rent and nothing gets done.
Exactly. Nothing, I mean, and all the, and then there's four hundred and fifty, you know, licenses that have sort of been approved for various uses, all of them have to present a CO to the Cannabis Control Commission before they can get even the final inspection like set up and scheduled, so, yeah.
Okay. All right.
And so this is the first floor where there's already a bakery and other businesses operating there? That's the space? Okay.
Yes, so there's the first floor and then our proposal has two hundred feet on the second floor for ancillary and associated office space, but there'll be no retail activity there. Yeah, there's other, there's other operational retail-type businesses on the first floor. That's why we're so excited to go there because it's an ideal location for this use.
The bakery is delicious.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? And this is a big case. All right, what is the pleasure of the board tonight?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion for twenty-two-two dash thirty-eight Concrete Garden at three zero-seven Broadway to approve with all of the conditions that were discussed.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
And then you return here January twenty-fourth for the major site plan review by the planning board.
Yes, thank you, Mr. De Priest. Thank you to the chair, members of the board. We really appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Next case is twenty-two-two dash thirty-five, three-eleven Eastern Ave, Steve McDonough. All right.
Hey, guys. Stephen McDonough here with three-eleven Eastern Ave in Chelsea. Pretty simple case. We're just moving from one side of the building to another side that has become vacant and that's really it. No construction is needed. The tenants that moved out from the space that we're moving into had a private parking lot in the front, so that's where we're moving into now. And that's really it.
Parking issues? Any parking issues? So it's a gym?
Yeah, so the company-
I'm going to be, let's see, that's a gym, right? How many people come to the gym? I mean, is it, it's a personal, you know, the personal trainer, how many personal trainers do you have?
We have a team of five. We usually do one-on-ones in small group classes.
Yeah.
The company that was there before us was a shipping company.
Yeah.
So now that they're gone, there's so much more room for parking. And if you see at the edge facing the car wash on Eastern Ave, there's a triangular parking lot, which is all reserved for us, so much more room now.
Much more room, much more parking.
Much more room, yeah.
Right, yeah.
And we've been there for five years, so.
No issue, I mean, obviously, yeah, no issues, right?
Yeah.
No issues, John, with the-
The planning board recommended approval with conditions of, standing conditions applicable, design review and a signage plan.
Yeah.
You agree to that?
Yes.
You're okay with that, right?
Yeah. That was the, just to make sure I heard it correctly, the signage plan and-
Standing conditions and-
And design review.
Design review.
Meaning that you present, any changes that you make to the exterior has to be reviewed by my department.
Okay, yeah, yes.
All right, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public wish to speak on this? Nope, I'll close the public speaking portion. Members of the board have any questions, concerns? How many parking spaces you going to have?
How many do we have?
Yeah.
I'd say around seventeen, fifteen, seventeen.
Any plan for snow removal and parking spots?
The owner takes care of that.
Oh, the owner?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and trash, where do you have your trash?
He has a dumpster in the lot, yeah.
And what hours of operation are you going to have?
Typically between five AM and nine PM.
Seven days a week?
Yeah, it's based on appointments, so whenever a client books an appointment, that's when we go.
How many square feet?
It's around twenty-two hundred, I believe. Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
So the other side will be vacant because you guys are on one side, you're just moving over to the other side, right?
Yeah, we're just moving over. We're not going to occupy the previous space anymore.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're all set, right? All right, what's the pleasure of the board tonight? You have any further questions? Anybody want to?
No, no more questions.
Anybody want to vote on this?
I make a motion to approve case twenty-two-two dash thirty-five, three-eleven Eastern Ave, Steve McDonough for a special permit, seeking approval to relocate personal training gym in the current location with the conditions, the standard conditions that been mentioned before.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good night. Okay, next case, twenty-two-two dash thirty-nine, seven-ninety-three Broadway. Yeah, sorry, Patel. Sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you tonight?
Happy New Year.
Good evening. My name is Jack Patel, actually. He's my cousin. He don't understand that good English, so I just come to talk behalf of him.
John, could you show, just show a picture of the location? That's not, just want to see that. Looking for the material. Let's try this one.
Jack.
So it-
This is the tail that I distributed to the planning board. It's all, it's all different. I just want to see what the storefront says. I mean, with the storefront, that's easy enough. Yeah.
So it's right there, John, the red?
Yes.
Okay. Is it occupied right now, John?
It's empty, right.
It's empty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Have there been any changes since the last time you came before the board? Has there been any changes to the plan?
To the building, no.
Yeah, to the building, to the space that he wants to occupy?
The space is the one that had the grids on it. It's a two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. It's a very small space.
Did, did you discuss like trash removal and signage the last month?
Yes, we discussed it, I think they discussed it in the last hearing with the trash and signage.
Okay.
And what was going to be sold here? Was it-
It's going to be a tobacco store, e-cigarette, tobacco, premium cigars and cigarettes.
Because the last time I thought he just said it was a cigar shop, that they would be selling cigars, but e-cigarettes and-
Yeah, e-cigarettes, cigar, tobaccos, cigarettes.
And what are the hours of operation?
Nine to nine, nine AM to nine PM, yeah.
Every day, seven days a week?
Seven days a week.
And numbers of employees, it's just him, right? Just one employee?
Two employees, two full-time and then he's going to be himself as a manager there.
Any other questions?
Yeah, did the Board of Health or the Health Department have some criteria in terms of guidelines that they would need to follow?
I don't know what their guidelines are. They did submit a letter to you, which is in the pact I gave you, basically stating that they have changed their laws such that any licenses that were not renewed were expired and they're not being replaced in an effort to reduce the number of licenses available in the city. The owner, the petitioner will have to seek a existing license and make arrangements with the person who has it, either purchase it or whatever in order to operate this. That is a Board of Health regulation, it's not a zoning regulation. You know, you have a list of criteria for your special permit that you need to look at, including socioeconomic need, impact on the environment, traffic flow, utilities, neighborhood character, et cetera.
Thanks. So without the license, is he able to operate or no?
Without a license from the licensing Board of Health or, I don't know who brings it, but one of them, without that license, he will not be able to operate. But that's separate from your actions.
So even if we say yes and they say no, that he won't operate?
Correct. It's not dissimilar from the marijuana, we have the only six, only, the city's regulations, only six can locate in the city, but you've basically approved seven so far or about to. It's up to the licensing commission and the state to determine who gets it. It'd be similar here.
Are you going to be renting this space, right?
Yes. So he went to the, first thing he went, when he came to the city, he went to the tobacco control and asked for a license to open the tobacco shop there and the licensing board telling, he told him that you need to get a occupancy permit in order to operate the tobacco store there. And license is available that particular time, that's what the answer he got at that particular time. So he went to get the occupancy permit for the building and they told him that you need to go to front of the board and get approval for that particular location in order to get the occupancy permit. And that's where we are standing here. So if there is no license from the day one that he getting from, there is no point of us to come front of the board.
Understood.
Any other questions? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
This is a public hearing.
Oh, sorry, public hearing. Does anybody want to speak in favor or opposed to this petition? Seeing none, I close the public participation portion of the meeting. John, do you want to?
The planning board recommended approval with standing conditions as applicable, design review, signage specifications, exterior lighting plan and all exterior lighting to be DocSky compliant.
Do I have a vote, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve case twenty-two-two dash thirty-six, sixty-nine and seventy-one is, oh, I'm sorry, I'm saying the wrong address.
Seven-ninety-three Broadway.
The seven-ninety-three Broadway. Bupendra, Bupendra?
Bupendra, yeah.
Patel?
Thank you.
For a special permit and seeking approval for a smoke shop with the standard condition that previously mentioned by John.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good luck.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Okay, final case. Well, eight Addison Street, Saint Mary Orthodox Church. Welcome, finally.
Well, good evening. My name is Father Tudor Sumbatano from Watertown, twenty-six Sunnybank. I'm the parish priest at Saint Mary's Orthodox Church. We're actually pretty close to you guys here and I'm coming before this, this board to ask for the approval of a curb cut and also a driveway. Unfortunately, Saint Mary's does not have a parking lot and every single parking spot actually counts. And one sort of problem is the fact that obviously services are on Sunday morning when everyone is at home, so there's no, you know, street parking available or if there is, it's usually limited. So basically, you know, that's, that's why we're, that's the reason why we're applying for the curb cut and also an additional parking spot.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I'm more than than happy to answer them.
This is a public hearing. Do any members of the public wish to speak for or against this petition? It's still open until the next meeting? The members of the board have any questions?
How many vehicles you can put on the other side where you have parking? How many you can fit in that parking space?
Right, so the one that's already-
Yeah, the one that's already there, yeah.
So I would say probably three to four. And my plan is actually to park on this, hopefully, on this other side where, I mean, the one that we're applying for this permit. And on this other side, it'll be maybe one to, I should say two to three actually spots.
Two or three on the new, on the rise high?
Right.
John, do you have any comments besides the?
No, I have no comments as of yet. This is going to go to the planning board on January twenty-fourth at this location, also six.
Understood, understood. So January twenty-fourth, right?
Yeah.
You won't, he won't, he won't be notified, right?
No.
So you just have to take note of that.
Sure, sure.
Any other comments from the board? Questions? Okay, so we will see you on January twenty-fourth? January twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth.
I'll see you on January twenty-fourth. They'll see you again February fourteenth.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Thank you, good night. Let's see, Marilyn makes a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.